Let's see, who we missing? Missing two. Okay.
Where's Gene?
Him and Billy's not coming. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for coming out. This is a special meeting of the Livingston Parish Council today being Wednesday, May the first, 2024, 6:00 PM. Before we get started, as always, let's start off with an indication. Is there, Mr. Goff, would you like to lead us in the prayer?
I sure will.
This evening?
Everybody stand, please. Heavenly Father, we come to you today and ask you to wrap your arms around this council, this parish, and especially everything that's going on down in Killian and hold them, you know, to where they can survive all of this craziness with the water. And I ask that we come here tonight with open hearts, open minds, and take in all the information and try to make this parish a lot better. And we ask these things in your name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Ricky. Mr. Matthews, would you lead us in the prayer? There is one, Ms. Sandy, you want to call the roll to make sure we have a form here tonight?
Mr. Artie? Ms. Sandifer?
Here.
Mr. Shavers?
Here.
Mr. Coates? Mr. Taylor? Mr. Wascom?
Here.
Mr. Mangus?
Here.
Mr. Goff?
Here.
Mr. Watts?
Here.
All right, we have six. That's fantastic. I call this special meeting to discuss a presentation, really for no action to be taken, but just to hear a discussion from Mr. Jerome Fournier on parish planning for zoning, I believe. But since then, we had an emergency come up. So I'll give you a quick recap of what it is. Right now, Killian's water is out. They have no water and their wells are shot. So we're working on, Mr. Delatt with the parish president's office has been working around the clock with local businesses to truck water down there to fill up their water tanks so these people can have water. And they're working on a plan to fix it. In his conversations with attorneys and stuff, that for the parish to possibly to be reimbursed for our expenses that we're doing to try to help the people in Killian, we need to enter into an intergovernmental agreement with Livingston Parish and the town of Killian for the purpose of repairing their water or getting their water services back up. So that's kind of an emergency situation, and the only way we can address that, to have that intergovernmental agreement, is to lift the agenda. And so to do that, we would need a unanimous vote from this council to lift the agenda so we could do it. Is there a motion to lift the agenda?
I make a motion to move that we lift the agenda for the Killian water crisis.
Motion by Mr. Mangus?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Lonnie Watts. Any discussion? Ms. Sandy, you want to call for the vote?
Ms. Sandifer?
Yes.
Mr. Shavers?
Yes.
Mr. Wascom?
Yes.
Mr. Mangus?
Yes.
Mr. Goff?
Yes.
Mr. Watts?
Yes.
All right, that motion carried unanimously, so the agenda will be lifted just for this. Now, I hope I explained it good. If you have any questions, Mr. Delatt's in the office. He could probably do a better job of explaining it, but really what we just need is a resolution to enter authorization to allow Chris Moody and Randy Delatt to enter into an intergovernmental agreement with Livingston Parish and the town of Killian for the purpose of repairing or delivering water in this emergency time. That's really what it's about.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Mr. Ricky Goff, second by Mr. John Mangus. Is there any discussion? You want to call for the vote, Ms. Sandy?
Ms. Sandifer?
Yes.
Mr. Shavers?
Yes.
Mr. Wascom?
Yes.
Mr. Mangus?
Yes.
Mr. Goff?
Yes.
Mr. Watts?
Yes.
All right, Mr. Delatt, you had a comment regarding this?
Mayor Sharp was suspecting that y'all would help him, and he wanted to tell y'all that the town of Killian would be eternally grateful for this council for doing those things. I want to say the whole parish is eternal because when people are in need, y'all stood up. Thank you, guys. I really appreciate it.
Glad to do it. And look, I just feel confident that if there's anything we could do as peoples, help fellow members in this parish, that's our, I mean, that's, I should take our number one priority. So I'll speak for myself. I hope I speak for the rest. We feel the same way.
I want to say one thing, if it's okay. I think we need to recognize James Macias with Demco for his donation to the town of Killian and their water, and Matt and Dynamic for their donation of water to the town of Killian. I think we need to recognize that and appreciation because they didn't have to do that, and they took time to make sure that they gave that donation. So I think we need to thank them for that.
Thank you, Matt, and anyone else. And I know there may be other people that have contributed. So let's give them a round of applause. Thank you, Sandy.
Mr. Delatt said that it's 400 homes that are affected. That's 400 homes in Livingston Parish, and we are the Livingston Parish Council. So this was absolutely a no-brainer, and Godspeed in the repair efforts for Killian.
Yes. All right, next item on the agenda is to discuss zoning in the parish of...
Make a motion to go back to the agenda. Make a motion to go back to regular agenda.
Motion back to regular agenda. Second by Mr. Watts, all in favor, say yes?
Yes.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Next item to discuss zoning in the parish of Livingston, state of Louisiana, Mr. Jerome Fournier. I believe he has a PowerPoint presentation. He wants to just basically an information meeting regarding future zoning for this parish. Mr. Fournier, you want to take the floor, give us your name and address, and go to town.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the council. Can you hear me? Is the microphone working?
Sure.
Good.
Tommy, you got levels back there? Yes, we're good.
Okay, good. Jerome Fournier with JPF Planning Consultants LLC, 5647 Canal Boulevard, New Orleans. I wanted to thank you all for the opportunity to work with the parish. It's been a really pleasant time with me. I hope we will continue. I had a initial contract to look at your master plan. These are, I want to go over the documents, set a review during this study. Documents review, I envisioned Livingston, which is your master plan. We have a copy of it here. I hope that everybody has had an opportunity to look through this. This is a really good document. The parish did a great job of preparing this in 2013. It needs updating, and I'll talk a little bit about that in the future. The other thing was the Unified Land Development Code. It's part of your ordinances. We had that. I looked that over initially, and it also has the zoning ordinance within it. Okay, so I'll have some comments about that later. And I also looked at the zoning maps, and the zoning maps that were created last year as a part of that exercise to create a zoning ordinance for the parish. Because you have an ordinance, then you have the maps that show where those zoning categories apply. All right, so I looked at those as well. I had meetings with the parish administration. I had meetings with the parish council with you guys, both as a whole, as well as one-on-one, and I met with many of you individually. That was quite a pleasure. I had a meeting with the planning commission, and I also had a meeting with the parish land use committee, all right, which I congratulate you on having one of those. Not many parishes do, but that's a really good group of people that are individuals within the parish that look at the parish land use, in particular, the envisioned Livingston land use plan, and they give updates and comments on that, all right? With that, I want to look a little bit about the growth because I know a lot of you are concerned about the growth that's occurred in the parish. And it has been, and you know this, and there was an article in The Advocate not long ago with a map that showed all of the growth areas in the state of Louisiana. Unfortunately, my home parish, Terrebonne, lost probably the largest percentage of population within a 10-year period. Livingston has gained the most in the parish, in the state of Louisiana, as a result of population growth, all right? So it's been enormous. 2020, I'm sorry, the year 2000, you had 92,531 people. The year 2020, you had 142,282 people. That was a 53, or what, 54% increase in the population in 20 years. It's a big, big increase in population. So it averages, what, 2,488 per year, you know, for you guys? But I also wanted to let you know that not all of that growth is coming from outside the parish. And I wanted you to take a look at the number that I have on the bottom here, and it's the number of high school graduates that graduated from Livingston Parish High School in the last year. It was a total of 1,609 students, all right? So we have to accommodate growth within the parish itself, not just growth coming from outside of the parish, all right? How we do that is a topic of discussion tonight, but I want to let you know that just to stop growth in the parish is going to be impossible, and it's based on the fact that we have a lot of internal growth within the parish, all right? So you can see 2,488 average per year. We have 1,609 students have graduated in each year. That's over 50% of that. Not everybody's staying in the parish, we know that, but a number of kids are staying here and they want to live next to their parents where they grew up and everything else, all right? So I just want to make that known, that not all the growth is outside, all right, coming from outside. I want to talk a little bit about the master plan, your envisioned Livingston master plan, all right? And as I said before, it's quite a good document. You hired a company in 2013 called Mig, M-I-G. They're out of Colorado. They did a really good job for you, but it needs updating, all right? And based on the population growth that's occurred within the last 10 years, all right? So part of that was created in 2013. It requires updating based on the population growth. And I want to say this, the zoning ordinance that you prepared last year should reflect the land uses that were identified in the master plan, all right? And just my opinion, and having looked at it, doesn't seem to, all right? It also includes a master transportation portion of this, and it includes a drainage master plan. That's all part of this, and it gives you some ideas of where you, as a parish, want to go, you know, in terms of those plans, all right? This is a map, you can see up on the board, and it shows the master plan for the parish, and it shows the various land uses that are applied to different portions of the parish, all right? With that, I want to talk about the major street plan. There's a major street plan that's outlined in the envisioned Livingston Parish plan as well. It identifies the major roads in the parish, and it identifies the corridors that you want to focus on for economic development and what else. And this is part of that corridor that I want to talk about. It's, they call it in the plan a barbell, and as you can see, it kind of borders the I-12 and US-190 corridors, as well as that corridor along the Amiet River on the very far western portion of the parish going down to French Settlement. And these are what they identified as the growth corridors in the parish. And those growth corridors, as you've seen within the last 20 years, is really where the development has occurred in the parish, all right? Denham Springs all the way to the east part neighboring Tangibaho Parish, all along that As I looked at the state law, revised statute 33106, we talk about the planning commission, and the planning commission has a lot of power, all right? And it's an appointed board. It's appointed by you, the council. "The parish planning commission shall make and adopt a master plan for the physical development of the unincorporated territory of the parish." This is out of state law, all right? Again, "Any such plan should provide a general description or depiction of existing roads, streets, highways, and publicly controlled corridors, along with the general description or depiction of other public property within the jurisdiction that is subject to the authority of the commission," all right? So the planning commission has a lot of power, and it does create the master plan, all right? You, as a council, on the other hand, adopt the Unified Land Development Code, and that land development code, along with the zoning ordinance, implements the plan, all right? So you, as a council, have a lot more power than the planning commission because you adopt the ordinances that implement the plan, all right? I want to talk a little bit about the zoning ordinance. As I said, the zoning ordinance should reflect the land use described in the master plan. I want to talk a little bit, some of the detail of it. Every one of your zoning categories has the ability to put a convenience store with a gas pump on it, you know? I don't know why that was put on there, but every category from the most restricted residential use all the way to a major industrial use, you can put a convenience store with gas pumps. That's one thing I noticed on this. We need to provide a table with minimum lot sizes, setbacks, things of this sort. We need to provide some definitions in the zoning ordinance. Example, density. How do we measure density? That's not really addressed in the ordinance. We need to do that, all right? We need to include provisions for wetlands and open space within subdivisions as well as outside of subdivisions, all right? In my opinion, we need to reduce the number of zoning categories. There are way too many residential categories. We need to reduce those, and we also need to rely on non-conforming uses, and I'll explain what that is, all right? So a non-conforming use, when you put your zoning ordinance together and you had a particular area or a particular lot, let me put it that way, that had, let's say, a meatpacking plant on it, all right? You zone those industrial, which is the category which should have fit in, all right? But it would have been surrounded by a whole residential area, all right? I think the preference would have been to have left that as a non-conforming use within the residential category. And the way we can do that, if they want to expand, we can provide provisions in the zoning ordinance to allow them to expand, but remember that if the meatpacking plant goes away, you're left with an area that's zoned industrial, and you could have a chemical plant move in there because that's how it's zoned, all right? So what you want to do is rely a little bit more on non-conforming uses and not zone every particular piece of property based on its current land use, all right? So I would stress that as a possibility when we go and update the zoning ordinance and the maps, and I'm highly recommending we do that, all right? I think that we need to look at overlay zones, and in particular, for areas like an airport. We have two areas in the parish that are designated as an airport, and I understand from some of the locals that one of them's actually a working airport, the other one's just designated as an airport, it's not really being used as one. But if we're going to actually develop an area into a bona fide and active airport with warehousing and those type of uses that would typically surround an airport, I would suggest that we put an overlay zone around that area and have, let's say, an oval that shows the limited uses that would occur around that airport, all right? So that's one use of an overlay zone, and I would suggest that we do that. I'd also suggest that we create a special category called Plan Development, and that applies to those areas where there's a community development district, a CDD, and it's been formed and it's still active. I notice that, I know that you have a few of them in the parish. I think Carter Plantation is one, Juban Crossing is one, and there may be one or two others. We don't want to do anything that would jeopardize the ability to pay back bonds that are issued in relationship to debt development, okay? So if we go in and downzone a particular CDD area, that area within that CDD, and they have a limited ability to pay back the bonds because we downzone that, that would be very problematic for the parish. And I'd suggest that we create what's called a Plan Development that would encompass that area where a CDD is located. And we can get specific when we create that, but I think we need to do that just to be on the safe side for the parish, all right? The other thing is that I've noticed in one of the earliest council meetings I attended, I think that you guys were making, taking action on very mundane things like, you know, whether they should, you know, be able to put a shed in the backyard, that type of thing. I think the one particular thing that I was, when I was here, y'all were looking at putting another trailer on a lot and that type of thing. Those things should be left to the staff, in my opinion. And what we did in Ascension Parish, when I was planning director, we had staff decisions on certain things like that. And there's a certain thing of use by right. So if we have a piece of property that's zoned commercial, and you want to have a Dollar General come in there, and I know we got too many Dollar Generals, Dollar Trees and Family Dollars and the whole things, but, you know, they do have a right to develop if the property is zoned properly, you know, on a commercial basis. Those activities, those developments shouldn't have to go to you or the planning commission. Those should be a staff decision, provided they meet all of the requirements in the Unified Land Development Code. We're going to require a traffic study from them. We'll require drainage study from them. We're going to make sure that they meet all of the height requirements, size requirements for the buildings and that stuff. But those decisions can be made at the staff level, and the staff would basically give approval to those type of things, all right? I would highly recommend that. Other things that would apply, I know that apartment buildings can be very controversial, depending on where they're located, but if they're located in an area that does allow them, I would recommend that the parish require them to get a conditional use permit, and that permit would be issued by the planning commission, all right? And you, as a council, can decide whether you want to have ultimate approval of that or not, but I would say that ultimately, or at least at the first blush, if you want to have control over those types of developments, I would recommend that you issue a conditional use permit for those type of activities, all right? And that conditional use permit is conditioned. You go before the planning commission, based on the traffic study or drainage study that would be prepared for that type of development, the planning commission could put conditions on that project, all right? We want them to upgrade a particular drainage feature. We want them to widen a particular road that's next to the apartment complex. We want them to make certain upgrades to interchanges, things of this sort, because of the impact they're making to the roads in that area. I would highly recommend that we do that, all right? Non-conforming uses, I already talked about that. I can't stress this enough, and this is something that we really need to talk about, is we need to have infrastructure accompany the development that's occurring in the parish, all right? When we have a large development that's coming into the parish, we need to make sure that that impact, that that development's having on public infrastructure pays its way, all right? And what does that mean? It could be something as small as an added turn lane going into the subdivision, or it could be the widening of the road, or it could be a major upgrade to a nearby intersection, all right? That's going to be determined when we do the traffic study for a project, and those projects, when they come into the planning commission for approval, the planning commission should place conditions on that project in order for it to move forward, all right? The parish has the ability to place conditions on a project on state roads that are above and beyond what Louisiana DOTD has, all right? We did that in Ascension Parish quite a bit, in fact. We had a major development occur on a major road, and we had them, you know, one of the conditions is improve an intersection nearby on a state road. In fact, where two state roads met, big intersection, they had to improve that intersection, all right? And we required that in coordination with DOTD, but you have the ability to place conditions above and beyond what DOTD has required, all right? The conditions for road improvement should be based on the development based on a traffic study, and I'll get into how that traffic study's done. Conditions on drainage would be based on the drainage study, all right? Sewer plant construction, that's a big deal for the parish right now, and I know that a lot of large lots in rural areas have MODADs. You can think about what you want with a MODAD. I know that they have some real issues with MODADs in terms of service. A lot of people just don't maintain them, and all of a sudden, we're having raw sewage that's going into ditches, all right? I would recommend that any property that's developing with 10 or more lots be required to put in a sewer plant, all right? Not use MODADs regardless of the size of the lots within that subdivision. And I would have that attached to the parent track, and I put in a definition of the parent track. And what we've seen in the past is that a developer will come in, or a property owner, and they'll have, let's say, a 30-acre piece of property. Well, they'll subdivide it into nine lots, and they'll have a large remaining track, and because it's less than 10, they don't have to put in a sewer plant. So they'll put in MODADs on those nine lots. Then they'll come in and ask for, subdivide another nine lots on that larger track, and then they'll put nine more MODADs on there. So what we want to do is define what is the parent track and have sewer plants that they're not going to be able to come in and do what I just described. They're going to have to, once that major track has been defined, if they come in and put in additional nine lots, which totals 18, they're going to have to put in a sewer plant that serves all 18 lots and any future lot that might occur in a subdivision within that large master parcel, all right, the parent track. So I just pulled the definition from elsewhere on this, "The existing parcel of record as of the effective date of the ordinance from which this chapter is derived, or the entire proposed development, if combining any existing parcels." That would be a sample definition of a parent track that we can put in your land development code, all right? The other thing, we need to put sewer plants as close to the roads, the entry roads as we can, in case there's a sewer truck main for a major sewer plant that might come in in the future. I think it'd be advantageous to parish to require that. I don't know when that would occur. We probably don't, and it may be 10 or 50 years from now, but if the sewer plant's near the road, it'd be much easier to connect to it than tearing up roads within the subdivision to get it there. Development impact fees. We've talked about development impact fees before, and there probably, that I know of, three, maybe four parishes in the state that have development impact fees. Baton Rouge, East Baton Rouge, St. Tammany, Ascension, and when we put traffic impact fees together in 2016, I think it was March of 2016, we had a study prepared by a company out of Austin, Texas, and that study created the plan for us, the fees, excuse me, and it's based on a benefit nexus test. Our friend Steve Villavasso, who's a major planner in the state of Louisiana, always gives a presentation to future planning commissioners, and he always tells you, "If you see a development impact fee that's an even number, like $200, there's problems with it," you know? It needs to be precise, and it needs to be based on your traffic study, and it needs to be based on the basis that we're paying, the fees that are being paid are impacts to the current road infrastructure, all right? It requires a detailed study that performs what I call a benefit nexus test, and that's what the fee is justified on. Fees for roads usually defined by the trips generated by the land use for transportation. And the Institute of Traffic Engineers publishes a document that shows each land use, single-family residential home, a drive-through bank, you know, all these different things have different traffic generation rates, and the fees are based on those rates, all right? We can also put fees together for drainage, and typically drainage fees are based on impermeability of the lot. So if I have a large commercial development and they have a massive parking lot, which is all concrete, that water's draining into your neighborhood drainage system, all right? And they would pay a drainage fee based on the impermeable surface that they have on that development, all right? Those typically... Those typically are. The fees are collected and deposited into a fund that's used for the infrastructure, identified in the benefit nexus study. And I mentioned, you know, in Ascension, we had created that fee in 2016, I think it was March of 2016, I started in June, and I was administering that program. When I left there, June of last year, we had collected, I think on the order of $12 to $13 million in that time period, alright? The money can be used to build infrastructure, it can be used also as matching funds for state projects. So if the state has a 10% match by the local jurisdiction for a particular project, you can use those funds for the match, alright? I will say that it becomes somewhat controversial with local properties. Nobody is exempt from the fee, alright? So if somebody wants to put a trailer on their lot, on a new trailer on a recently divided lot, that trailer's subject to the fee. If somebody's pulling, putting a single-family detached home, building a home on a new lot, that's, that's subject to the fee, alright? Schools are subject to the fee. The parish, we had the parish of Ascension pay the fee for projects that impacted roads that were built on, alright? So everybody paid the fee, alright? Again, it was used for infrastructure that we identified. The other thing, what we, we talked about earlier, and I talked to the administration, and we were working on this in this last legislative session, is with something called the Road Infrastructure District. And when we had new subdivisions that came into the parish, this is in Ascension, the parish of Ascension had this one piece of legislation approved by the state that was applicable only to Ascension Parish. And when a subdivision came into play, they approached the parish, and they told us whether the roads are going to be public or private. If they decided that they wanted the roads to be public and maintained by the parish, they had to set up a Road Infrastructure District on the lots that are within that subdivision, and a fee is placed on each property, and it's put in a lockbox, and it's used to repair and maintain the roads within that subdivision, alright? We tried to get Livingston Parish attached to that legislation this year, but we were unable to, so I'll work with the administration on trying to get that on the next legislative session in Baton Rouge, if you, the parish, want to pursue that, alright? Floodplain management, right? And this is the big topic, because we were all subject to the infamous 2016 flood, you know? I had just started working and was hired in 2016 in June, and in August, the flood hit, and it hit you as bad as it hit Ascension, if not worse. We had close to 15,000 homes that were, that had flood, flood damage, and 1,500 of those were determined to be substantially damaged. We worked with FEMA and tried to get that thing done. I'm going to recommend that we raise your current elevation standards at one foot over base flood elevation. I'm going to make a recommendation that we go to two feet over base flood elevation, and I think that what this would do for the parish is protect more homes from future flooding, but it will also make those homes that were flooded eligible for certain federal grant money, alright? If at one foot over base flood elevation, they're currently not eligible for grant monies, alright? At two feet, they are, alright? So I think this would be really advantageous to you as a parish and your property owners, alright? I'd also limit the amount of fill that can be placed in the parish and where that fill can be. Currently, in Ascension, they went to three feet of fill, no higher. So if you're in low-lying areas and you need more than three feet of fill, we do allow a chain wall of two feet above the three feet, which would give you five, but if you have to go any higher than that, you're going to have to build on pier and beam type technology. And you'll see that in areas like French settlement, when you're crossing the lower reaches of the parish. I would highly recommend that you would adopt that, alright? Any fill that's allowed on a lot, whether you go to three feet or whatever that determination is, it has to be mitigated to an equal volume of pond surface, alright? So think about this, if you put fill on your property, there's so many cubic yards of fill that's above the floodplain, or, you know, above the surface, you have to have an equal volume of vacant space in a nearby pond that can accommodate the water that's displaced by that fill, alright? So you can do that with a pond, alright? I would encourage building of pier and beam. I know the development community does not like that, but when it comes to certain low-lying areas of the parish, you do require that now, you get into the swamp area, you know, you have to build there, because there's no way of putting enough fill to build and meet the requirements. There's certain areas of the parish that we might consider no fill, environmentally sensitive areas, we can define those. We looked at the area that's defined by the state as the coastal zone, and you have a large portion of your parish that's in the coastal zone. I think that would not be practical for Livingston Parish, that's a very, very large area, but I think we can come up with a definition that would suit the parish appropriately, and I think we need to work on that, wherever that is. It could be based on an elevation, it could be based on a certain area, it could be based on a certain drainage area, let's work on that together, and I think that's an important thing that you can do as a parish, alright? The other thing is wetland preservation. We want to encourage wetland preservation. We do, will require those when they put a preliminary plat together for you, define those areas. Let's, let's make a determination as to how we want to define wetlands. It is, it is defined by the Corps of Engineers, by the way, but how do we want to apply that to the parish when property owners are developing near a parish, alright? I would, on floodplain management continued, I'd require flood mitigation designed to maintain the existing flow patterns established prior to the proposed improvements at the site. So if we're having a development that's occurring near a major stream, stream bed, stream, we want to maintain that, the integrity of that water flow prior to, after the development occurs, alright? So once subdivision's there, we want to be able to maintain the same flow pattern that occurred prior to the development, alright? That's typically done. We will have that defined in the drainage plan, and we'll implement that. The other thing is preparing a major drainage master plan, I call it a drainage master plan. It's going to define the major flow channels in the parish, it's going to define the floodplain areas per FEMA standards, floodways within the parish, and provide building standards within those areas, kind of reiterating a little bit of what I've talked about before. And it's going to prepare an inventory of existing drainage features in the parish to establish drainage baselines, alright? There's some, there are a number of programs right now that are available nationwide, and particularly in the state, there are a number of firms that do this, where a developer will give us a computer diagram of their, of their development. We can plug that into the program, and we can see how the pattern, drainage patterns have changed once that patterns, once that, that development is plugged into the program. But what it takes is a lot of inventory work prior to plugging in and working the program. We need to know what the culvert sizes are above and below the development, we need to know where roads impact. I remember, if you recall, in the 2016 flood, I-12 became a major dam, and, you know, a lot of flooding occurred because of the water flow going under and around I-12. Well, smaller roads can have the same effect, alright? So we need to know where those are and how those drainage, that drainage network works around those particular features, alright? I'm going to make a couple of recommendations on the administration and how projects are I think we need to modify the application process and be in compliance with revised statute, state revised statute 33113, and I quote here, because it's such an important piece of the law. "A planning commission shall approve or disapprove a plat within 60 days after the submission thereof to it. Otherwise, such plat shall be deemed to have been approved, and a certificate to the effect shall be issued by such commission on demand." So if we receive an application from a developer for a project, for a plat, a subdivision of property, and that plat isn't considered by the Planning Commission within 60 days, then that plat is deemed to be approved. By state law, we can't get around it, alright? So what I'm going to recommend is that we revise the, the application process, and start off with what I'm calling a pre-app meeting, alright, pre-application meeting. And we're not going to accept an application until it's complete, absolutely complete, alright? At that pre-application meeting, we're going to have all the staff members that are going to be affected by a particular, by a particular development, planning staff, engineering, drainage department, building department, any department of the parish that's going to be affected by any subdivision that comes into the parish, they're going to have a seat at that table at the pre-app meeting, alright? They're going to be able to provide comments. We're going to, at that meeting, detail the parameters of any traffic study that's going to be required of that development, alright? And depending on the size of the development, we will basically expand the scope of the traffic study to include intersections, roads that are well beyond the parameters of that subdivision, alright? We're going to do the same thing with the drainage. We're going to define the study parameters of a drainage study at that pre-app meeting, alright? We want to detail all information needed to complete an application, and the application is not accepted by the parish until all that information is included, alright? So if they come in and try and piecemeal the application, we're not accepting it, because if we accept it, it starts triggering that 60-day period, alright? So we want a complete application before we accept, before we schedule it, before the Planning Commission, alright? Those are just part of the recommendations I have for the, for the administration process, there are others, I'll go over them at another time. But the next step in this process, I've been working with the administration and the purchasing department on how to prepare an RFQ, so we're going to go out and we're going to get a firm that's going to help us with the revision of the master plan and the zoning ordinance update, and that's a planning firm. And I have outlined on this slide, you can see all the expertise that we'll need, you know, for these things. For the land development code, we'll probably need some planning expertise, and we'll need some engineering expertise. For the master transportation plan, we're going to need planning and we'll need engineering, in particular, a traffic firm, a firm, an engineering firm that specializes in transportation issues, alright? For the master drainage plan, we're going to need an engineering firm to assist us with this. There's a lot of detailed calculations that are involved in drainage, in drainage plans, we need that. If you, as a parish, decide that you want to put together an impact fee, we're going to require a firm that specializes in impact fees, and as I said before, we can't just be willy-nilly and throw out a number and say that's our impact fee, alright? And with that, if we're going to do a transportation impact fee, we'll very likely need a transportation engineering firm to assist us with that. If we're going to be doing a drainage impact fee, we'll be needing a drainage, a firm that specializes in drainage to assist us with that, alright? They can be one and the same. We'll probably very likely need a finance firm to assist us with the fees, alright? And with all of these items, we'll need lawyers, you know? You can't get away from lawyers, right? We need them all, so we're going to probably have some legal expertise that helps us with this, alright? All the advertisements we make for the RFQ are going to adhere to state law, as well as your parish ordinance that requires, that outlines the requirements for an RFQ. An RFQ, by the way, is a request for qualifications, it's not a request for proposal, alright? And there's a big difference. With state law, especially with engineering firms, you can only require them to submit their qualifications, once a firm's selected, then you negotiate the price, alright? If you don't like the negotiation, you go to the next firm, the next qualified firm, that's how that works, alright? With that, I know I went through this rather quickly, and I appreciate your patience, and I know that you have other issues right now, especially with the water in Killian, but I'm going to, you know, open it up to Q and A if you'd like to, trust me, as much as I can.
Thank you, Mr. Drum. I really, I know you wanted to present this at the council meeting, and I just thought this would be a little bit more, too much detailed and take up a little bit more time than what we really wanted to cram inside of a parish council meeting, a regularly scheduled council meeting. And I wanted to take this time to, if you don't mind, maybe to open it up to the, to the council for now, if anyone here had any questions. I think, Mr. Mangus, did you say you had a question or two?
I have several, but we'll go one at a time. Robert Rule's order, we'll get two times, so. First thing, just a point of clarification, Livingston Parish suffered the worst of any parish during the 2016 flood. 73% of our households were flooded, and 86%, according to FEMA, of our structures, permanent structures, took on water. It was 38,300 homes, not counting trailers and all that. So yes, obviously not comparing, but we did suffer more than other parishes, and it's a very, very serious issue as far as that goes.
I appreciate that, and thank you for informing me of that, because, and I didn't mean to say that there were more, you know, but, and I know that you were impacted severely by that, yeah.
Do you have any questions on that?
I can come later.
Anyone else have, Mr. Shavers?
Yeah. I'll make them quick. Can you, can you tell me what overlay zones are specifically, just a quick definition of what that is?
An overlay zone is basically an addition, an additional layer beyond the actual zoning. So you might have a, let's use an example, an airport, alright? And you'll have-
Arbitrally, you pick airport.
Arbitrally, I'm just picking arbitrarily, we're using airport, because that was up for discussion earlier. But let's say that you have an airport, and you have particular zoning around that airport, you have a zoning for the airport itself, and then you might have some warehousing around it, but there may be some areas that you want to protect beyond that, and within that overlay zone, you might have a residential area, but you're limiting the height of particular buildings. You might have a commercial area, and you're limiting the height around those, it's zoned commercial, but you're limiting the height around that, within that overlay zone for those particular uses, you know, because, because of the importance of an airport and because of the safety factor, alright? And that, and that goes beyond the FAA cones that are, that you've seen that are at the end of runways, alright?
So I think it's no secret, the whole parish knows we're getting, or, an airport is being presented. What are your thoughts on, with this specific district of where this airport is going, is not zoned, what are your thoughts on the Planning Commission and their opinion, and how they should proceed with this airport with it not being zoned?
Is it, is it, does the airport currently exist?
No.
Then, I would say, if the airport does not exist right now, and it doesn't appear on the FAA maps as an, as a bona fide airport, it has to be zoned properly in order to have an airport there, right? And that, in that zone, I'd have to look at the book in detail, but I think it's a light industrial, if I remember correctly.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Can you do a conditional permit for any development?
You can, it's up to the parish as to, you know, what you want to apply that to. I use the example of apartment buildings, but if you want to apply it to commercial structures- But if you want to apply it to commercial structures, things of this sort, certainly true. As an example, you would not want to apply it to a single-family home on a lot out in the rural area, yeah.
Okay. So, because I have a specific area in my district, it's a state highway, it's a gravel pit that comes off of the state highway. The highway is very narrow, and that gravel pit is tearing up the state highway. So I'm thinking, like when you were talking, that that could have been a conditional permit for that development, that they have to maintain that state road, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
And the other thing I might add, too, with conditional use permit, you can put time limits on them. So I'll give you a conditional use permit for five years. After five years, you have to come back and renew it. And if they haven't complied with the conditions that you put on there at the very beginning, you can refuse to issue the conditional use permit for the next five years.
Okay. I'm sorry, John. I just have a couple more.
You've got the floor. You've got the floor. Go ahead.
It's fine. Maintenance of the sewer plants. You had mentioned ten lots or more, doing away with the MODADs. Who would be responsible if we did go that route for the maintenance of those sewer plants?
The private sewer plant owner. Whoever owns those plants is responsible, but it's up to you, the parish, and the Department of Health to go out and test the water that's coming out of those sewer plants and make sure they comply.
Okay. And then where, so impact fee, and I'm new to this, just newly elected, so I'm trying to understand kind of the way of the land.
All great questions.
Okay. Where do the impact fees go to? Like where does that money for those impact fees for a development, where would that go to?
If it's transportation impact fee, well, all the fees you collect go into a lockbox. And those fees are only used for those projects that you define when you prepare the study for the impact fees. So when we prepare an impact fee study for transportation and we collect transportation impact fees, you have defined the roads within that impact fee study that you want these fees to apply to, all right? And I would suggest you look at the master plan that we had, I showed you for transportation. That's a very good start at looking at the roads that we want to implement. You don't want to use impact fees for dead-inroads, as an example. You want to use impact fees that are going to be, that are going to apply to a project that helps reduce the traffic congestion in the parish, right?
Okay. So, because I know a lot of people in my district, they had came to me when I was running and on the campaign trail, that it would be beneficial to have impact fees that could go to the school for when schools are overcrowded. Because I know in my area, I did the data on how many, how many the school, like let's just say Live Oakcock and Hold versus how many students enrolled in the year 2023. And I mean, they were just a couple of hundred off from being at max capacity. So I guess my question is, is there a way to get impact fees from developments to go to the school or school board to help maybe in the near future build an additional facility or something like that?
The answer is yes, but it's a little more complex than traffic, because you're going to be working in coordination with a school district, all right? So you're going to have to enter into the interagency agreement between the parish and, because remember, school, the impact fees are paid when you pull a building permit. So when you pull a building permit, it's the parish that issues the permit, and they would be collecting a fee at that point in time. Then you would transfer those funds to the school district so they could build schools.
Okay.
Now, it's, remember that the impact fees are paying for capital infrastructure. So it'd be a school. It's not going to, and you could probably argue that you could buy school buses. I've seen that done before. But it's not to be used for teacher salaries and things of that sort, all right? So it's only capital infrastructure.
And then my last question is, I'm sorry, yeah. The pre-meeting that you talked about with the traffic studies and the drainage studies, can you just kind of reiterate that? Because I think the way our kind of process is, we have a pre-meeting with our planning department, the engineer, where I've sat in on those meetings, and it's the developer, and they've got a plat, and they're wanting to do this. It's kind of the first phase is the talk, and then the second one, and then the third, and it goes on and on and on. So are you saying that on, at the pre-meeting, when we sit down with the engineer and the planning department, that they should have the drainage and traffic studies at that pre-meeting before the planning commission even approves it, within that sixty days?
Let me go back. What I'm talking about is a pre-application meeting. I understand what you guys do now, and I was really confused, and I could never get anybody explain to me when, what triggers the sixty days under your process. So that's why I'm suggesting that we do the pre-app meeting, and at that pre-app meeting, we tell the developer what we want in the traffic study and what we want in the drainage study.
I got you.
Yeah.
That's just kind of, yeah.
And then they come back to the parish, and I'll reiterate this again, a complete, a complete package. And then that triggers the sixty days. Because I, and I don't have any issues with what you're doing now. You know, it's, you can argue that it's a pretty good process, actually, but I just don't know where the sixty day starts.
Right.
And that was my issue with it, and that's why I suggested what I did. There may be a way, there's some common ground, maybe modify what you're doing now to say that this triggers the sixty days, you know? Because I don't want to put the parish in a position where they have to approve a project that they don't necessarily want or haven't put conditions on, because we extended beyond the sixty-day period per state law, all right?
And then last one. Do you suggest different areas of the parish be peer and beam only? Or do you think that should be a parish-wide thing? Because I know, like down south, that would probably benefit them, but me up here, up north, I don't know if it would or not.
No, I wouldn't recommend it parish-wide, by any means.
Perfect.
And I would think, when you looked at the south part of the parish, maybe even areas there, it's very limited as to that requirement, you know? I wouldn't want to hammer anybody, and, but we do want to protect the floodplain area of the parish because of the flooding that occurred, you know?
Well, thank you very much for answering my question. I'm sorry, I had a lot of them, but as you were talking, I was trying to jot them down. But I do appreciate everything you're doing, and thank you for coming here tonight-
Oh, absolutely.
-and giving your time for that.
It's my pleasure to be here. And please, and all of the council, you know how to get in touch with me. If you have any other questions, please let me know.
Mr. Mangus, did you have another question or two?
Just really quick, there's a bunch, and we can get to them later as this process goes on. One of the main things is the water retention ponds in subdivisions, the way they exist now is they're built, and ostensibly, the HOA is supposed to maintain them, and especially with the multiple filings. And I was, thank you for pointing out the nine lots and then the other nine lots in the parent track. But, so you get a subdivision after several years, when it's now, like Woodland Crossing, for example, that's now approaching its completion until they add more. Those retention ponds, they've been mowed, but nobody's ever dredged them. Somebody has to maintain them. The parish is not capable of doing that. I know you mentioned the IDD and all that, but can that be a conditional use permit? Can we require a developer that they will maintain that pond, especially until their construction is done?
You can, whether they're going to be around or not in five or 10 or 12 years, another story.
Then we have to bond them.
But, and that's a possibility. The other thing is that road infrastructure district legislation I referred to, that Ascension Parish had with the state, they just renewed it this year. We tried to get a Livingston attached to it.
It doesn't accompany, I'm sorry to interrupt, it doesn't, from the way I read that, it doesn't mention anything about drainage. It's just for roads.
The new one does. And that's what I was going to say. The recent legislation that just got renewed, they put drainage in. That's why I wanted to get Livingston Parish attached to it, so we could do that. So typically, the drainage is maintained by the HOA. But we know what happens to HOAs, you know? People just don't pay. The fees are way too low. They don't have enough funds to do what they need to do. It is a problem, you know? But on the other hand, do you, as a parish, want to take on the responsibility of cleaning those, you know, and maintaining ponds, you know? So there, it's-
The developer put them there. I would imagine it's developer's responsibility.
Well, the developer put them there at the request of the parish, and that's to detain water during rain events, all right, to prevent flooding. So remember, there are two types of detention. One is to maintain the flow that we talked about before of the drainage pattern that occurred prior to the subdivision. So when you go in and build a subdivision, you're changing the drainage pattern, and you're putting in a detention pond to accommodate the change in that drainage pattern, all right?
But it doesn't exist in a vacuum. And so even if you have the best hydrological engineers in the world, if they say it's going to retain so much water, after five, 10 years, more building, more silt has gone into it, it's not maintaining that. So your drainage study is now-
Yeah. Well, that is, that is an issue, and I think everybody agrees with that, yeah, so.
Any more questions from this council?
I just had a couple of quick comments, if everybody else. I don't see how we can not get into the maintenance of those, because there really is no other real answer. And the only way we're going to be able to do that is piggyback on that to where it's funded. So it's not on the backs of the people that's already been here, but it's a new development that comes in. And then that particular development pays that fee, takes care of their roads, takes care of their retention pond, and retains their own water for the long haul, not just for it to get people in the homes and then walk away. And as I understand, that is, it takes all the pieces out of it, and it's assessed on their property taxes. And then it comes to the parish, and the parish can handle whatever mechanism they wish to make all those things right. So it takes neighbor out of neighbor with HOAs. It takes all those things out of it. Don't want to have to do it, but I think as a parish, we're going to be forced to do that, to do the right thing for the long haul. And it's kind of like you pay your own way. You pay your own way as a neighborhood coming in, and your impact in the community, whether that's schools, whatever, but you know, you're going to be assessed that to take care of your own footprint, so to speak. The other thing I wanted to go back to real quick is-
If I may-
Sure, go ahead.
Make a comment, Mr. Goff. There is a provision in that law, and hopefully we'll get it for Livingston, that you can apply an IDD to an older subdivision. It has to be voted on by the property owners within that subdivision, and it, you know, but you can go back to those property owners and say, look, if you want your ponds maintained, you want your roads maintained, you know, in an efficient manner, then you can vote yourself into the one of these districts, all right? So that is, that is, we can't force it on them, you know, on existing homeowners, but you can ask them to vote and have one created on their subdivision.
So that being said, it brings up a question, is when you say they vote, do we all just have a neighborhood meeting, or does it goes through the register of voters' office, people that are registered there and property owners there, and then they actually go to the polls?
It's an actual vote.
Got you.
Mr. Jerome, real quick.
Go ahead.
While we're talking about this, if you do that, just say you've got 20 homes, 15 agree to do it, five don't. Then, but collecting the money. See what I'm saying? I mean, these five are not going to pay.
It's on your property.
It's on your property tax bill.
You don't have no choice.
Yeah.
That'd be the only way you could do it legally.
Yeah. You can't choose not to pay your property taxes. It appears on the property.
Okay. All right. My bad.
It's a line item, like your tax millage for your schools, everything else. It appears as a line item on your tax bill.
So that's, you would be creating a special tax district just for that?
Essentially, essentially, you would, yes.
That's what you do, just like you would a street lighting district or a mosquito bait district or whatever.
Exactly.
Just for that, okay.
And it's just within that subdivision.
Just for that subdivision or that area?
Yes, sir.
They'll create that, and basically, it becomes a checking account for the parish.
To maintain that pond.
The parish is monitoring and managing that checking account, and the maintenance and repairs and things of that nature in that district. Whether it be the pond, but roads as well as-
Whatever you choose for it to be.
Right, right.
And of course, we'd have to do the bookkeeping for it.
That's right. But the other part of that is, is it's not just arbitrarily, oh, we want money to assess that. It is very specific, as Mr. Jerome said, that you put in there, that is to maintain the roads, repairs, maintenance, and also if we wanted to do the ponds, we would put that in there. I think the only thing we have to do moving forward, and I'd like for you to look at that, is a lot of these, a lot of these retention ponds have no real access from maintenance of it. So if we end up down the road having to maintenance these things, it needs to be structured enough on the property where we can have maintenance, just like gravity drainage district's going to take care of the lateral behind it that the developer put in place, and there's a servitude of access to go there. So we need to look at that from these retention ponds, because most of the time, there's no access.
Correct.
There's no access. So we need to probably look at that in this whole scheme of things to where, if we do end up taking them over. The other thing about the treatment plants and the fact that they have to be at the road, I think the other option there is that they have to provide us a mechanism to the road. It doesn't have to be by the road. I would hate to have, if I know I could put it in a far back left corner inside a site out of mine, but he has to run a pipe to where, all the way to the road, to roadside access.
And a lift station to get it there.
Exactly. Yeah. Whatever that mechanism is, to where down the road, when we are able to start picking up some of these batch plants, and they become under the umbrella of the parish, and we can tie all the systems in with force main or whatever.
That was the idea behind that.
Right. I just want to make sure that we, when we start creating it, that we, we don't lock them into that they got to be in the front. You know, that they just have to have access to be able to tie in at the main, at the main access.
And when we process the preliminary plat for these, we can request that a servitude's required, you know, for that access.
I'd say the pipe and everything. I'm like, put it in the ground.
Yeah.
I don't want to have to pay for it down the road. Put it in the ground.
Yeah.
Bring it all the way to the road, put it in the ground, put a valve on the other end, close it off, whatever you got to do, put it in the ground.
Okay.
And that's less expensive, we got to do down the road.
Yeah.
The other thing I wanted to just kind of touch base, and we were talking about the preliminary meeting, and I keep going back to that, I like to refer to that as a concept meeting. And that's exactly what it is. And I think that's where we get into a jam with what we have now, that some people think that that, just because it's met and we've discussed it, that it's kind of started to process, like you said. And I think if we have a concept, then we can, like, share with them more, to your point of what needs to be done. And I like that idea 100%.
Yeah.
And I also like the idea of the, as John said, about the nine and the primary, the parent-
Parent track, yeah.
-track of property to minimize, because I've always had frustration trying to figure out what's the best way to navigate that, but I think that is absolutely it. So my question to that is, I have 50 acres. I sell John enough to do nine acres, or nine lots. And John does the nine lots, and he owns that, and I own the other 50. And then we come back and somebody else does the 50. Simply because you got to subdivide that acreage out of my 50, would that still, even though they're two different owners, constitute-
Parent.
Yeah. It's all part of the parent track.
Okay.
Yeah.
I just want to make sure that we were clear on that, and that, good. Very good.
I have a couple of questions, if the council doesn't have any. And I would like to say, oh, did-
Mr. Watts?
Did you have another question, Lon?
I talked to you after. It's just about setback on these fields. In other words, if you acquire two-foot of field, I guess basically what I'm saying is, you take a 10-lot subdivision, and they have to put three-foot of field in there, and you've got a house next door that's been there 70 years, and he's got a three-foot drop-off getting to his house. Is there, could we put a setback on that?
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah. It basically covers the pad area, and you leave a 10-foot buffer from the property line, all right? So then you require a certain, like, three-to-one slope going down to that buffer area, and once you get down to the grade, it's 10 feet to the property line, right?
Right. I know that Ascension's got a lot of that down there.
Exactly. And that is a big issue, right? I know when the flooding occurred in 2016, you heard a lot of people discuss the fact that I flooded because my house, the house- that I flooded because my house, the house next door was elevated and everything else. Yeah.
Still one more?
No, you're done. I'm just kidding. Can you be quick?
I can, I promise I can. In reference to the three foot field, and you made the statement earlier, that it really wouldn't be for other parts of the parish and I don't, I just have a real problem with that. If you're going to put three foot, you're going to put three foot. It doesn't matter to me where it's at in the parish, it's going to affect someone. So I don't see how we can say, no, it doesn't have to be, either you're going to put three foot of field to reach flood elevation, you know, or not. And to me, it doesn't matter where it's at in the parish, that if you are in a lower lying area, wherever that may be, and you just so happen to don't meet that elevation, that water's coming through there.
Yeah. Well, I think that what you just said is the key, is a low lying area of the parish. You know, you get up north part of the parish, you know, St. Helena, you know, we got some pretty high ground there. There's, there's no need to put fill in those areas.
I agree with that. But it's all based on the flood elevation.
Correct.
And that's a common line.
Right.
Across our parish as a, as a laser beam across. No matter where you live, where you at, if you have to build, if you're going to build your home and it takes more than three foot of field to get up to flood, base flood elevation, which we're going to require, and right now we require a foot above that. So that would be four foot of field. And then your suggestion is, and as I understand is like some law coming in, that it's going to be two foot, no matter what we decide. So that's five foot of field. So I just think it's, we don't want to, it's three foot. If your flood elevation allows you to stay under that, great, you're in a high area. If it doesn't, then you got to be on pier and beam. And when I, when we, is there a way to, is there a way to fix that structure of pier and beam so that we have some type of openings, if you will, for water to come in and out of underneath there? Under, in other words, we put pier and beam, I see it done in New Orleans all the time. There are pollens in the ground and then they build this massive gorgeous home on it. So I never paid any attention to what they, with the skirting, if you will, the way they hide all of that, if they leave any kind of openings to allow that water, when it does rise, to come and go.
We got, we're supposed to have breakthrough louvers.
Yeah, those are breakthrough, and those are in your building code.
Good.
So the parish has adopted the unified building code standards. So they're defined in there.
Okay.
So you already require that.
Good.
I have a question. I'm so sorry, just because, John, you, I just have one question when we were on it. If you build and you have three foot of field dirt and you're going two feet above base flood elevation, let's just say a house has been there since the 80s and then a newer house comes in, how do you tell constituents, you know, if you flood, you flood? Does that make sense, what I'm asking?
Yeah, I mean, right now, what we're doing is requiring properties to build at a certain floodplain elevation, all right? So if, if an older home wasn't built to that standard, they, they're built to the standard that was required at the time they built, you know, in the 1970s or something.
That's okay. We'll come back to Aaron's question. I do want to turn to the audience just for a second.
Sure.
And go ahead, give us your name and address. And if you would, what I was going to let the audience do is ask your, anybody who wants to come speak, ask your question, if you would, sit down and let him answer it. That way it doesn't get into a.
I do, and it kind of bounces off of Ricky's.
Okay, well, he just walked up to the podium here.
I didn't mean to interrupt you, Aaron.
I think you might be coming up to speak on what we're talking about. So let me just insert it.
Go ahead.
Limiting fill in the higher elevations. After the flood, some people just built a mountain because they could. And so the higher elevations of the parish, if we keep building that up, it just makes us lower. Correct? And so we would limit.
Right. But I guess the point I was trying to make is that some areas of the parish, there's no need to put fill, there's no need to build up your house, you know, because you're not in the floodplain, you know, you're in a higher elevation and you just build at grade, you know? There are no issues with that. But if you're in an area that FEMA is designated in the A flood zone, A1, A2, whatever, but you're in the X zone, you don't need to build on fill, you don't need to bill on pilings because you're in the X non-flood zone of the parish. So it only applies to the FEMA areas that are designated as A. You actually have a portion of the parish that's way south that's in the, I forget.
Flood zone.
It's, it's the high energy flood zone where, yeah.
Real quick.
The V, thank you very much.
Let me, let me.
V flood.
Let me say this, I'm going to have a bunch of questions as well. I do want to ask one or two, but, but I've got a whole list of questions that I'm planning on calling Jerome and getting, asking him personally on the phone.
Okay.
When it's not on television and when I can ask my questions personally. So I want to let everyone here, I don't know if he would be willing to take a call, but I'm sure if you reach out to, he might answer your call. But real quick, Gary, ask you a question.
Thanks, Gary O'Neil. 20224 Gardens Court, Walker America, lifelong Livingston Parish resident, certified floodplain manager. I think most of y'all know me. First off, I'm so excited to see y'all talking about floodplain management and building codes and elevation requirements and, you know, open space foundation systems and things like that. Those are music to my ears. I'm so glad y'all are leaning in on that. And to Jerome's point, he had a slide up here earlier that mentioned the things that the parish needed to do, planning, traffic, transportation planning, master planning. One of them was a drainage master plan. The parish is currently advertising for that. It's actually currently open right now. I think the deadline is May the 9th, I think. So they're going to select a firm or a team to actually conduct a drainage master plan to take care of that piece. Part of that, if you go back and look at it, is a public document, this solicitation document is public. It includes a section to request potential ordinances and changes that would answer most of y'all's questions and also give you some input into the process of developing those. So while Jerome's here, and these are all great questions, there's going to be a process in place shortly that gives you guys a chance to chew the fat on all those things and sort it out with design and engineering professionals from a drainage perspective to say, this is what works, this is what doesn't work. And so again, I love that y'all are asking these questions. I'm so glad that the council's leaning in to get this stuff right. Y'all are, y'all will soon have the services of a professional engineering firm and a team to actually take care of all this stuff, walk you through it, and then that will then feed into the unified development code or any kind of type of codes and ordinances you guys want to update from a drainage perspective. That master plan will generate suggested ordinances and code changes that you can then adopt or change or tweak however you see fit. So that help is on the way. I just wanted to kind of let y'all know as y'all were trying to sort out what you should and shouldn't do, you're about to get an engineering firm and an engineering team that helps you do all that stuff very shortly. So anyway.
Fantastic, thank you, Gary.
Didn't mean to.
No, that was good information. I'm glad you said that. That kind of, it takes a load off of us having to try to make a decision tonight.
I think we're just so excited to get the feedback. We've been waiting for a long, you know.
If there's no more questions here, I do have one. You made the comment that we allow convenience stores with gas pumps in every one of our zonings. You, correct me if I'm wrong, but I, we currently have an R1 which does not allow convenience store in an R1 zoning. I mean, yeah, R means residential, doesn't it?
Yep.
So if, if, you can't put a convenience store in a residential area. I mean.
I think it's in the definitions.
I just, I mean, then.
I'm looking, I'm reading from the ordinance right now. And you've got on section 117-146, permitted uses for an R1 zone, detached, single family home, vegetable gardens, minor utilities, guest house, cemeteries, daycare facilities, convenience stores with or without gas.
See, okay, well, I just, where I come from back in the city, I didn't think, we either had to rezone that area.
Yeah.
Or give them a variance.
Well, and that's what I was suggesting.
Okay, all right. That was one thing. And then you had a couple of questions, but I got some more I want to ask you.
Sure.
But I'm going to call you to get some of the other ones. You said, do you zone non-conforming, I think you said, use?
Non-conforming uses, correct.
Real quick, a non-conforming use, if an area is already zoned, so, so are you saying that non-conforming use is its own specific zoning?
No, it's, it's an area, it's, it's a lot, as an example.
That was previously zoned?
That was previously, has, has a land use that doesn't comply with the zoning that encompasses that property now.
Okay, stop, stop. So when that got zoned, that property that's in the middle of this non-conforming area got zoned with the rest of them?
Correct.
Okay, so it is zoned, it's just not zoned to conform. So at that point, you go in there and give them a special zoning, undo that zoning and give them the non-conforming zoning?
No, non-conforming, it's not a zone in and of itself. It just says that the land use that occurs there right now doesn't conform.
To the zoning that it is.
To the zoning that exists.
So if it ever changes, then it would not.
It would have to revert to the underlying zoning.
Okay, okay. That clarified that.
So it's not spot zoning then?
But what I, what I want to tell you, well, basically what we're having right now is somewhat spot zoning. But what, what I want to tell you is that there's no condition that that land use has to end its services or anything like that. So as the example I gave, a meatpacking plant that is surrounded by residential, if you would have zoned it all residential, that meatpacking plant would have existed and it would continue its operation.
Because he's grandfathered in.
Because he, that's a better word for non-conforming use, is grandfathered.
Okay, well, I like that word a lot.
There you go. So grandfathering is similar to non-conforming use.
Okay.
Real quick question, then you can't go, it would be spot zoning then to say, hey, I have this residence and I want to do a dog grooming in it and it's zoned R1 and this is not a convenience store, I'm teasing. And so I just want to put this business in there. The only way that would happen would be a waiver, right?
It would be a waiver to this, to this specific zoning because you're right, you do not want to go in and zone that one lot.
Yes.
To make it comply with, with a kennel or something like that. That would be spot zoning, all right?
Right.
Yeah.
So you're not doing that with non-conforming, you're not, it's grandfather legacy.
I'm grandfathering whatever existed prior to the zoning coming.
Let me try to share a little bit. On Duff Road, there's the, the oil refining kind of type plant that's there and been there for years. And it was put there because we had no zoning.
Right.
There's a lot of places in our parish that have activity going on that, because we had no zoning. So what we are looking at doing is zoning that area, even leaving it as residential. But because that particular facility is already there, we're going to put it as it's there and it's okay and it's not compliant. That way, whenever it takes off and leaves, whatever does come back, it's still zoned residential or wherever it's at.
And it has to follow the new, the current zoning area.
Right, right. So it's kind of grandfathered, but they basically just have a pre.
Right, right.
Approval.
Yeah.
Only for that particular entity, not for anybody else. If they leave, somebody else.
Exactly.
And as I mentioned, we don't want to shut those businesses down, whatever they are. And we could have provisions in the code that allows to expand on that existing lot. You know, they want to expand their businesses up to a certain percentage. We don't want to shut businesses down.
Right, and I don't think the parish does either. So let me just say, I appreciate everyone coming out this evening. If there was any more questions, if you're welcome to come to the microphone, if you would, ask your question and then just let, and have a seat and let Mr. Jerome answer you.
All right, here we go. Mike Gino, 8878 Green Leash Drive, Dim Springs, Louisiana. One, your ordinance already has calls in there for a maintenance servitude to grant access. Two, regarding flood, you know, drainage breakaway walls, your insurance requires that underneath Peeman Beer. You did a wonderful job dissecting that master plan. Thank you. I just really want to push the overlay aspect on the airport. I mean, 70% of Livingston's expenses are covered through sales tax and like 60 something percent of them go out, away from Livingston. They live here, home here, and then travel elsewhere and spend lunch money and all that stuff there. So I do want to advocate the airport aspect and to have the foresight to be able to see that if you zone around it to light industrial, because in the master plan, that portion is already set light industrial, then possibly we could bring in a new industry that we don't have, not just aviation, but warehouse distribution, Pepsi, Amazon, all of that, which, you know, we talked about that 20 years ago and it's outlaid. So for whatever it's worth, I just hope y'all move forward with it because we can't lose in this deal.
So Gino, I want to thank you for your comment.
No, you're welcome.
Healthy for this parish.
It is, I mean, it's wonderful.
Thank you very much. Any more comments or questions before we adjourn? Again, I know it was a.
Waivers, I do have a waiver. I have a question about waivers. Can I ask a question real quick?
Sure, go ahead.
Waivers. So help me understand how we handle this right now for waivers, because we have people asking for waivers. I, I'm not a fan of waivers, but in certain situations, they are permissible.
Right.
But I think amongst us, back and forth for the past couple of months, we've had lots of questions about waivers and whether to.
Well, as I understand it now, if a waiver is requested by a property owner, it now goes to the parish council.
The wave zoning you talking about?
Uh, no.
Just any, any waiver?
Waivers for subdivision, for fences, for.
Any ordinance that we have.
Any ordinance we have.
Okay, I thought it was regarding.
I'm not, I'm just going to, I'll just say, you know, to waive the law, that's a big deal. So, but, you know, for some, we just need clarity on it.
Okay. Well, I think right now the parish doesn't have a board of zoning adjustments, and I don't know that you want to create one. But I would suggest that if there's a waiver that need, that is being requested, that waiver probably should be submitted to the planning commission right now and have the planning commission weigh in on the waiver, either granted or not granted. I'd have to look at and discuss this with some legal counsel on that because I, you know, right now, I, I think I gave the example at the very beginning when I attended one of the first council meetings, you guys were weighing whether you'd give a waiver to this one property owner to put a second mobile home on a lot. And, and you granted the waiver, but, you know, in my opinion, those decisions shouldn't be at the council level. It's, you guys are way up here. It should be at either, at the planning commission level, you know?
Can I ask why?
That's just my, my opinion on that right now.
Why?
That's just my opinion.
Okay.
Okay, our attorney has told us, no.
That you can't give waivers?
Has told me, just no. We've typically.
Yeah.
Because we're under a moratorium right now and I understand what Ms. Sanford is saying. I have, I feel multiple calls and people tell me they bought a piece of land and they want to put mobile homes or whatever for rent property. And I'm not throwing anybody under the bus, but.
Yeah, no.
Planning's like, well, it's up to you, you grant a waiver. under the bus, but planning's like, well, that's up to you, you grant a waiver, and I'm just, we passed a law.
Yeah, I'm going to have to defer to legal counsel on that, because, you know-
That'll be another question for another day, I think.
We are working on the ordinance to fix the one that the waiver is coming up a lot, and that is of our own hand, and we are putting our constituents in a box that they didn't, they don't want to be in a box, they didn't wish to be in a box, and they conform to everything else, but because of the wording, you know, it's either a rolling stopper, it's a stop sign, that's pretty cut and dry. You stopped or you didn't stop. And this is, is you can subdivide your property or you not, and you can't, because it's a named subdivision. That's one of our biggest waivers that we just whirl on through, and we're trying to solve some of that. But the problem that you have right now is because we've had no zoning, and actually we've got some zoning in some districts, some zoning we don't have in districts, that you have now, there really is so much garbage and muddy water that it just, it causes a lot of problems. And until we get this process in place, a hard number, a hard line, then we can turn it over to the planning and let them do it. Other than that, I think it probably should. If a constituent wants to go to the, through the process to ask for a waiver, then I'm willing to let him stand, in my district, I'm willing to let him stand there. I may not tell him yes, just like I did with the third address. I believe that they should subdivide their property if they want a third address. I understand Mr. Joe's, that he had last time, I get it, and I respect him for that, but at the end of the day, that's our, that's our process, that's our law, that's the way it's situated, is there. But we absolutely, as a council, have the right to waive any of that. But it definitely does open Pandora's box sometimes, so you've just got to be very careful. But saying that, do you have any kind of timeline?
Oh, we're getting on this RFQ process ASAP, so I want to get a firm on board right now, you know, so I wish I could give you a timeline, but we have to do, we do have to meet state requirements, you know, for advertising and everything else.
Right. But for the, to complete this whole project, are we going to try to go ahead and, are we going to try to go ahead and move forward with what I call the low hanging fruit, to things that we can actually go ahead and put in place, and like, start navigating some of this stuff and making it happen-
Yes.
-in six months, and then get the big things moving, and maybe put this thing to bed within a year?
Oh, within six months, I hope to definitely have the low hanging fruit already taken care of.
Would this be a low hanging fruit? If the parish Planning Commission, as if a developer shows up tomorrow, if they inform that developer, hey, this is not your official planning meeting, this is your, what'd you call it?
Pre-application.
Pre-application, so understand the clock's not ticking, but we, this is what we want, now tell us what you want to do, this is what we need, and when you come back next time, you know, with all this information, the clock will start then.